Corner of that slide. Currently, about 70% of our critical care beds are taken up with COVID patients. That means limited intensive care beds for strokes, heart disease, and car accidents. I know you're feeling like we've been yelling about the sky falling for several months now. This really, truly is falling. Next slide. This is another indicator of severity. So these are our statewide pediatric hospital admission rates. I will tell you as a family doc, I've admitted a lot of kids to the hospital. Never in my career have I seen these kind of numbers. While misinformation abound, facts do not play politics. You cannot agree or disagree with facts. They are facts. So fact, COVID numbers are two and a half times what they were at our last, at our worst time last fall. Fact, businesses are unable to remain open because of staff sicknesses. Fact, children, teachers, and caregivers are sick. Fact, the hospital is full. Clinics are overburdened. We have sick staff too. Fact, we cannot continue at this pace. And the sad news is it's going to get worse before it gets better. As you know, hospitalizations and deaths lag two weeks behind any peaks in testing, which means other grim milestones are just days away. Next slide. These next two slides show you how quality masking can help flatten the curve. I know you heard a lot about this early in the pandemic, but what we need to do is flatten the curve of this Omicron surge. So, and in the first slide, I'm recalling this from memory, I apologize. This is about COVID activity. So if you look at the, I think it's the purple and the blue line is pretty much on top of each other. That's if we decrease vaccine positivity and increase vaccine. That's not going to do much right now. We're in the middle of this surge and vaccinating people is not going to help us right now. What we really need is that green line that you see underneath there. That is a line with 80% masking, good quality masking. If you go to the next slide, it's a similar picture, but this is about death. Okay? So that orange line is how COVID is projected to look in the next several weeks. Again, the blue and the purple are on top of each other. Don't really make such a difference. But masking, high-quality masking, if you calculate the area under the curve, is going to save 1,100 lives in the state of Minnesota. This is a COVID-caused pandemic. Its effects range from mild to brutal. We are doing our best to manage folks because positive with approved and proven medications and treatments, but these are in short supply. We have been begging and pleading and educating and offering vaccine clinics to whomever will have us. The vaccine is safe. The vaccine is effective. But again, it will not stop this surge right now. It is going to help us in the next surge. And I definitely still support vaccination, but right now what I'm asking is about masking. Next slide. Does that one say something about ICU bed availability?
Yes.
Great. I previously spoke to you about intensive care bed availability and staff shortages are also an issue. On Friday, Centra Care had over 800 people out of work because of COVID or an exposure or waiting test. And as I stated before, the very exciting monoclonal antibody therapies and new antivirals are promising, but are in very short supply, and these treatments are being rationed. Next slide. At Centra Care, you may have heard, today we're reinstating policies about, policies that we had relaxed previously. So we're asking anyone who visits us to wear a medical-grade mask. No bandanas, no masks, no homemade masks. We are instituting no visitor policies, and we are on the verge of having to ration care. Next slide. I understand that you all are considering a masking policy in your county buildings. I think this is a great first step. And I also want you to consider the fact that we want to keep your employees safe, but we also want to keep your constituents safe. I also want to recall that you were the very first commission to pass VAC-21 in our community, and you have the power and the authority to help make policy that will slow this pandemic. Please use this opportunity to lead our wider community. Please do not wait for the state, another county, or another city to make this opportunity. Please put a mask mandate in place in your county. I know there's a lot of misinformation out there. Surgical masks, KN95s and N95 reduce the spread of disease. Cloth masks are no longer acceptable. Please place limits on public gatherings and encourage social distancing, including lunch breaks and businesses. Please encourage vaccination publicly, privately, and everywhere you are. We need a unified voice from our public officials and policy with action that supports good health. Again, you have the authority and the responsibility to help us slow the spread of this brutal virus in our communities. Please take action. The livelihood of our community depends on it. I'm happy to take a few questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Dr. Jayden from the board?
Dr. Jayden?
Commissioner Schlangen.
This is Commissioner Schlangen. I had sent a list of questions that I would like to have answered. Do you have the answer to those questions?
A lot of those questions were regarding vaccine, and I'm happy to answer those at another time. And much of your information that you requested was also available on the Minnesota Department of Health website. So if you have specific questions about masking, I'll answer those. And I can certainly come back another day to talk more about the vaccine.
What about the employees at your hospital? I know you've always had the masks on and you're basically have mostly those that are vaccinated. How, how many of your employees are out of work due to COVID?
I said in my presentation that we had 800 out sick on Friday. And you have to remember that even though we mask at work, these are community, these are community spread infections. That our employees have kids at schools that aren't masking. They have family and friends that aren't masking. And we're seeing a delay also from the holiday season. So, so these employees are getting sick likely in the community with the extremely high spread of disease.
Okay, any more questions for Dr. Jayden from the board? At this time, we thank you for joining us and sharing this information with us. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I think you all have my email address. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doctor.
Monty, at this time, you?
Just leave some things aside here. Rob, is this your stuff? So, I'll wait until our Commissioner Johnson has returned. Let's see if, I see Michelle is with us too, if questions come up on legal matters. So, in your packet, a couple, couple policies. And I should just state from the beginning, this is upon the request of the board chair, you have policies that address mask wearing for employees, mask wearing for individuals entering county facilities, but not a countywide mask mandate. I was not under pressure, I was asked to look into that matter. I would say if you want to explore that issue with Michelle this morning, please do. She's here. But I was not asked to draft a policies regarding a countywide mask mandate. So if you'd like, I can go through the, the two policies in your packets. The first one addresses a face covering policy for county employees. You see, I have two there, and I didn't mean to confuse folks. So you may recall, just on Tuesday, the board adopted an OSHA ETS policy, which included a mask, a face covering policy. So I did feel obligated to give you a policy which essentially mirrors what's in an OSHA ETS. And it's certainly more stringent than the old executive order mask mandate from July 2020. So I wanted to put that out there on the table as one possibility. The policy number two more or less follows the footprint of, of the governor's mask mandate from 2020 with a bit of, some modifications to reflect current mask guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health. You know, I think, in my opinion, I think you could adopt policy number two. OSHA has announced that its enforcement of the mask test mandate won't begin until February 9th. So I think you've got a window here where I think you could consider a little more perhaps lenient masking policy. So if I may, I'd like to just, if I could focus on number two. So number two basically says is, and you can see the modifications from the draft that I sent out. Basically, it, it says that some of the old face covering types that were under the governor's mask mandate are no longer recommended by MDH. For example, a scarf, a gator, anything that's kind of thin. Basically, they're, they're recommending you should, you know, do, go with the N95 or the KN95. I had to educate myself on what's a KN95. I understand it's the Chinese version of an N95. That's, that's essentially what it is. I understand it's actually not accepted in medical, in medical environments. It's not been endorsed for medical environments, but it's a Chinese alternative to the N95. But if you don't have access to an N95 or a KN95, you should have, and this again, this is straight from MDH guidance, you should have a cloth mask, which is at least two layers of tightly woven fabric, is what you should have. So that would be ideal. And again, as I pointed earlier, MDH is saying that things like those, those cheap disposable face masks and thin things like scarves and bandanas and gaiters are no longer recommended. So from here on out then, basically, the rest of this policy mirrors what we were doing when we were operating under the mask mandate. So if you're out and about, you know, in the corridors, out and about in the office, you should have the mask on. If you're in a private office, you don't need to wear the mask. If you're in a cubicle with face-high walls, you don't need to wear the mask. You may recall, we bought, there was a pretty good investment in higher cube walls back during, you know, several months ago. So that would allow folks to not to sit there all day with a mask on. So this again mirrors essentially what we were doing months ago, again, with the exception of really the kind of mask that you can wear. It needs to be, again, the multi-layers cloth, tightly woven cloth. And I should mention is that we're ordering 500 more of these compliant masks, and hopefully we'll have those in soon. So that's, that's, that's the second policy. And I, as I mentioned, I think, my personal opinion, I think you could enact it at least through early February, because as I mentioned earlier, OSHA enforcement of the mask test aspect won't begin until February 9th. So that's the first part, the two policies covering employee masking. If you, would you like me to go on to the?
We got a question. Commissioner Kapinski.
Thanks, Chair. How many of the masks do we got on stock right now that would qualify for this?
Well, we have lots of, and Johanna has those. We have, we have several boxes of these. And then actually, you know, they have three layers of material. I'm not so sure they're acceptable to MDH at this point. My, my, my opinion at this point is until we get those new ones in, wear what you got. Wear the best thing we have. I hope many people kept their cloth masks that we ordered a long time ago. You may remember the ones with the Ben Kind logo on those. Those I think have two layers. So I think they're okay, but people may have long since lost those or whatever. But we do have a pretty good supply of these surgical types that Johanna tells me actually are three-layered. So again, I'm not totally sure that they're acceptable, but my opinion at this point is if you do choose to enact this, I would say to everyone, you know, wear the best you can. You can find, we're going to get more cloth ones in very soon.
Keep going, Monty.
So if you'd like, then I can move on into the resolution. So I was asked to draft a resolution regarding a requirement that members of public entering county facilities would be directed to wear, wear face coverings as well. I consulted with Michelle Meyer on this issue. Again, Michelle is online with us. So Michelle provided me with information about the county's authority as a public health authority to take measures to control the spread of infectious diseases. And I think Michelle believes that this is, this is permissible under the law. And I think you also have some additional information that Michelle provided, which I've given to you all. And I think it does include some examples of other counties that have similar requirements, they're requiring the public to wear a mask coming into their facilities. There are several counties and some cities that have these requirements in place at the moment. So probably the important part of the resolution would be the last page, all the now, therefore. Essentially, this would say the county is declaring a public health emergency under that relevant statute. It talks about some exceptions. For example, the current MDH guidance is that you wouldn't, of course, have kids under two wearing masks. And if anyone, anyone could assert an inability to wear a mask based upon a medical condition, mental health condition, disability. But of course, we would not challenge a person coming to our office, nor ask them to prove that. That would not seem reasonable for us to have to take that kind of step. It, it isn't as prescriptive as the county policy. In other words, it doesn't say what kind of mask you, you should wear. I guess we would hope that people would wear the right kind, the appropriate kind. But I didn't envision that we would be checking people at the door to examine the kind of mask they have and deem it acceptable or not. So, Mr. Chair, that's, that's it. And yeah, I hope we've had a chance to look at the material that Michelle sent you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just quickly, if we could please ask the people that are online just to double-check their mics, there's at least one that's not muted, and there's a lot of background noise coming through the system.
Yeah, I see someone has initials T.N.
Thank you for that. I was about ready to do that myself. I do know the board's going to have a lot of questions. At this time, I think I would like to, Johanna? Give us some information about where the county sits right now.
Regarding COVID situations?
Correct, yes. COVID only, yep.
Yeah. So as of last night, I didn't update this this morning, we had currently 14 employees out on some sort of COVID situation. That could be exposure, it could be isolation, it could be quarantine, just very broad. 10 of those situations are positive tests, that they're actually in isolation. For quarantined, the number is a little lower effective yesterday because we did have nine people return back to the office within the last three working days. So it's ebbs and flows. But right now, if you're asking where have we been in the future compared to now, I think we've stuck around the 10 or to 15 situations. Where it is higher right now is that typically we have one or two people testing positive. So having, you know, 10 people test positive is definitely an increase.
Any questions for Johanna?
I do.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Do you know the sensitivity of the testing? What level it's reading at? Is it in the 20s or is it higher than that?
No, I don't ask. The employees are just telling me if they test positive.
That's correct.
I'm not asking for medical data on that. They don't sending me the actual tests. Right now, we're just taking the employees informing me, and that's what we're.
And if all the ones that have been tested positive had symptoms?
That is another question I believe she cannot answer.
I can say there's a mix. Not everybody has symptoms, but most have had some sort of symptoms. I can, but I don't have the exact number, no. I don't log that, so.
Any other questions for HR? Thank you for that information.
I got one.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If we did enact this policy for the public, who would be the gatekeeper at the front door of DMV? And would we go back to?
I was envisioning that we would station a security guard at our front door. To police this, I would presume we would have signage. But I wasn't expecting we would hire a private security.
Okay.
I think we're gonna, if you can, if you approve this, we would hopefully have voluntary compliance.
Mr. Chair. And then we'd have masks readily available for, too, correct?
We would have a basket of free masks at the door.
Mr. Chair.
Well, the difference would be that last time it was a state emergency, and we didn't have any choices.
Correct.
This time we have some choices.
Yep, that is correct.
Mr. Chair, what I hear you saying, Monty, is we're, we're hoping on some personal responsibility here, right?
Right.
We're, we're not going to police this.
I think that would be ideal. I wouldn't want to create confrontations between employees and the public. We hope folks would, would, would wear the mask as requested. But no, I don't see us aggressively enforcing this and possibly creating confrontations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from Human Services, Sandy, Jaclyn, or Bob that want to share any information with us about this? Jaclyn?
Jaclyn is with us, I see.
We can't hear you, Jaclyn.
Yeah, interesting.
We are still having technical.
Hers shows a phone.
Yeah, hers is on the phone.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go, thank you.
All right. I could certainly provide a general update of our COVID situation at this point in time, if you'd like that.
That would be fine, thank you.
I do have a presentation. I don't know if that will work. If you'd like me to share my screen, I think, Monty, you just have to allow me as the presenter.
Yeah, I am. Share screen has been given its fits.
And if not, I can just read for the.
Well, let's, Jaclyn, we'll, we'll try, we'll try. We'll try. I just made you the presenter.
Oh, it worked.
It worked great. Didn't work for me, but it worked for some of them.
Okay, so if you can see my screen, I'll go ahead and get started here. So we'll just go ahead and look at the data. So currently, we have 360 active cases. We've now surpassed 10,000 case cases in total. We're at 10,604. We have 500 cases currently, or in total hospitalized. 91 cases in total in the ICU and 125 deaths. Now those later numbers, those are cumulative over the course of the pandemic. Since my last update back on the 20th of December, that would be an additional eight new hospitalizations, 11 more within the ICU, and 10 additional deaths since December 20th. This is a look at our daily case count in Benton County. So you can see here, can you see my mouse on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see here at the head column, this is currently where we're at. So from Friday through yesterday, Monday, we added 415 new cases. Here's a look at our new case count per week. The white boxes, these indicate the current week. And then in comparison, the week from a year ago. If you're looking over here on the right-hand side, this red line, this is the total number of cases. If you look down here, the green line, this is zero to four-year-olds. So those are individuals who currently are not eligible to get the vaccine. Below that, the 12 to 17-year-olds and the five to 11, in the yellow and purple. Just for a visual, just for a line, this is where we're at for 2022 for the current, that current week, which is last week. And then we'll take a look here at our adult cases. This is case counts again per week. Here are the two white boxes in comparison. Here's where we're at for 2022, so above, about 250 cases. And then here is the total for 2021 for that same week. So we're much higher currently than what we were a year ago. So look at the level of community transmission. This is from the CDC metrics. So the CDC uses that scale of low, moderate, medium to high, or substantial to high. We're currently at a level of high community transmission. We have a case rate of 584.51 per 100,000 and a test positivity rate for our county of 23.34%. So that metric of high, we're currently 5.8 times that metric of high for CDC's indicator. So a lot of community transmission is occurring of COVID-19. And this is a look at the states. Currently, every county in the state of Minnesota is at a level of high community transmission. And then just a quick look at our vaccination rates. This is a chart by age group. The age group that's currently eligible for the vaccine are those five and older. So that's this column here. We're at 55.3%. Our total population, which includes birth through end of life, that is 61.4% of our population currently. The highest age group, that's five percentage that's vaccinated, is those 65 and older at 82.8%. So we'd really like to continue to see the dark green line continue to grow up into that gray area as vaccine rates increases. And then just a quick recap on current recommendations. I know Dr. Jayden went through this as well, so I'll just go briefly. Again, vaccination is recommended for everybody who's five and older. And then you should also be receiving booster doses when eligible for 12 and older. Wearing a good quality face mask. If you don't have access to a KN95, you know, wearing one of those surgical masks, a three-ply surgical mask with a cloth mask over top so that it's secure around the face is a good way, a good tool. Very, well, I should say, good compilation of tools to kind of help better protect yourself. Getting touched in, especially if you have symptoms for COVID-19, if you've been exposed or if you've been traveling or you've been around someplace with a high level of transmission. And again, especially if you have those symptoms. Staying home when you're sick, even if it's just a cold. Washing your hands frequently. Avoiding large crowds and avoiding exposure. You know, if you have a family member who's immunocompromised or if you are yourself, you know, really taking extra care to prevent infection. And then lastly, I just had a slide here for some resources. So if anyone's looking for COVID vaccine, there are some great tools online to find access to a vaccine. You can search the Minnesota Department of Health website and put in, you know, find my vaccine, and their web link will pull up. You can also Google search vaccines.gov, and you'll get a list of vaccines. And individuals can also text message to the number 438-829 and put your zip code in the message line, and it will, it will text message you back a list of those locations closest to you to get a vaccine. And then for a COVID test, there is again, information on the Minnesota Department of Health website. If you just Google search for get tested, that link will pull up. Centra Care also has online scheduling as well. There are both walk-in locations for both texting or testing and vaccination available as well. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any questions for Jaclyn? Commissioner Kapinski?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Jaclyn, I should ask this to the doctor, but I've been hearing that this peak is anywhere from two to six weeks, is what Centra Care was saying, this latest one? Is that correct, or?
Yeah, it's correct. Yeah, Centra Care had shared that this is the peak. They're looking at roughly two to six weeks. And really, you know, strongly looking at those other mitigation factors in the meantime. Vaccination is still key, but the vaccine takes a couple of weeks for those antibodies to develop. And so, you know, using other layer mitigation measures is the key right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Jaclyn, just a couple of questions. I don't know if you can speak to them or not. I'm asking just because they were in your presentation. But in regards to the, I believe the number was 91 ICU beds been totally used since the pandemic began. Are you aware of the, of the 91? How many of those people came in to the hospital because of COVID? Or were some of those in the hospital with something else and tested positive for COVID?
No, that's a great question. I don't know that I would have access to that information, though.
Okay.
As far as that component of it, yeah.
One other, one other question.
You know, they didn't test positive.
Okay, thank you. One other question in regards to the map. I understand the problem with community transmission. It was interesting, you threw that map up, and MDH or CDC, I believe, shows Minnesota all red in all 87 counties, but not one county on any border state is red. There's multiple cities, borderline cities in this state, and the, and the states around us do not have high numbers with community transmission. That's just, seems a little odd to me.
So that was, that was just a representative of the state of Minnesota. So I could pull it up live and show you the link on the CDC. That you can, so when you look at the. live and show you the link on the CDC. You can, so when you look at the information, you can narrow it down by state, by county. And so that is just the state that I was looking at. That's why everything else looks gray out.
Okay, so.
If we were to look at the entire United States, you'd see all the different colors.
So if we were to zoom in for, if we were to zoom in, for instance, let's just pick Fargo-Morhead.
How about Benton County?
We would see, we would see probably a red county around that in North Dakota. I don't want to make an assumption. I'm just, I'm asking, because those other states around us showed up pink.
Sir, give me one second here, and I can pull it up and show you with the tool.
I made you presenter again, Jaclyn.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Let me see that pop up here. All right. Let me, I should not be selected here. Let me know when you can see it.
Not yet. You have to share your screen. You have to click the share screen button at the bottom.
There you go.
There we go.
All right. We're good.
Okay, so just one moment here. My internet's circling.
Broadband.
It's amazing how this comes back.
We'll give it a second. There it goes. Okay, so here is the level of community transmission for all of the United States.
Okay.
So what you can do on CDC's tool is then narrow it down. You can look at county, you can look at state, but this is that picture there. So if we were to zoom in, and again, the internet's lagging here.
And again, just.
Can you kind of see the different colors?
From my perspective, yeah, I was just going to mention that. We've got different colors showing up on this particular map, and the other map from CDC showed every county in this state red.
Yeah, solid red.
Yeah, and they're all red in the state of Minnesota at this point in time.
It looks like some are orange.
A little redder.
Kind of get it to zoom in, please, this year. Let me try to go to another page here.
I'm sure there's enormous traffic on these sites these days.
And that's fine if it doesn't catch up quick. I can certainly check that. I might want to.
Yeah, and I can send the, I can put the link in the chat. You can definitely pull it up on a computer. But when you narrow it down and zoom it in, yeah. And again, you know, they update this information based on the level of community transmission on their metrics. And so this is currently, you know, currently updated consistently by the CDC. So things can change from day to day as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Jaclyn? Thank you, Jaclyn.
Yeah, thank you.
So does one have any questions for Mr. McDermott? Is there information you want to share with us, Jim?
I'd make a couple of comments here.
You may want to use the code.
Yeah.
That, one question you had, Commissioner Johnson, was what percentage were in the hospital for just being in the hospital, and they found out they had COVID? Well, according to the numbers that are coming out of New York and Seattle right now, where they're being hit the hardest, they're showing 1/3 to 43% of the people in the hospital that have COVID were there for other reasons, and they found out they had it by just testing them before, you know, just general testing. So the bottom line is Omicron is very contagious. It's going to cause many more cases, but we shouldn't really be looking at case numbers itself because that's, it's just wild. It's almost unbelievable at times. What you need to look at are the hospitalizations, ICU and the deaths that come out of it. Now, anytime you have more sick people, even though they're not as sick, there's going to be a great number of people, and it's mostly the unvaccinated, that are going to get very sick and are going to die. So it's just natural. What's happening right now is the medical community is tired for going on the three years now. You got to put yourself in their place. We're not just talking about our inconvenience for a month. We're talking about them. 20% of the medical staff has left the occupation this year alone, very well, 21. So what we're talking about today is requiring employees to wear masks to help prevent the spread, people coming in to help prevent the spread. And we know that if a person's not going to wear a mask, he's not going to wear a mask whether we mandate it or not. Bottom line. But it goes back to, like I think one of you had mentioned, personal responsibility. And I think it's our personal responsibility to make this statement that we support our medical community. We support the concept of trying to bring this down. And personally, I'm not for mandates. I've told you all that before, but in this case, I'll wear the mask because I feel for my fellow citizens that are getting sick and dying. And remember, the unvaccinated are really at risk with this, really at risk. The vaccinated, they've shown that if you're vaccinated and you've got your two shots and a booster, you're pretty, have a good chance of, you might even have it and not even know it. So that's good. But it's the unvaccinated people, and in this county, half of the people are not vaccinated. So we have a lot of our neighbors that just haven't done it. But so by me wearing a mask when I go out, I'm helping them more than I'm helping myself, to tell you the truth, because I'm vaccinated, have the booster and that. But at some point, we have to start being concerned about fellow citizens, no matter what. And like I said, I'm for this mandate, even though I don't believe in them, because it's the right thing to do.
Mr. Chair, I guess.
Thank you. Jim, just one quick question in reference to 20% of the medical staff that have left Central Care, for example, or probably nationally. Any kind of opinion on how many, what percent of those staff have left because of a vaccine mandate, or because they were just tired? I totally get they're tired out. I totally understand that.
Well, they wear the mask.
But what I'm wondering is, of the 20% that have left, the medical profession, do you know how, what the percentage of those are that left because of a vaccine mandate?
I know some, I can't come up with that.
Okay.
All I can do is, is what I, what I read, and I read probably 600, 700 articles a day, to tell you the truth. I really stay on top of this. And I read what the left prints and I read what the right prints. I add them together and divide it by two when I find the truth.
Well, that's an easy formula. I wish it worked that way.
Because each side has their agenda.
Right.
And they're trying to. So again, it's your personal responsibility to do some of the homework yourself and take a look at it. Because, yeah, when they say, oh, we got all these hospitalizations, but 40% of them, just, well, they're accidentally.
Right.
Okay, now, now we know. And that's been the whole thing for the last two years. The government hasn't been totally truthful with us. There's still questions I have about statistics. I'd love if MDH would give us the statistics when they say, this number of people died. Okay, how many of those had four, or five, or six comorbidities? And they were probably going to be sick even with the flu, it would happen, so.
Jim, could I also ask you your opinion of this? If this board, under recommendation to move ahead with a mask mandate countywide for employees and for the public to enter the county facilities, if they were indeed to do that, do you find it odd that we are not talking about policing that?
No, because the person that's not going to do the mask, number one, they're not going to come. If, if we did try to police them, they won't come.
Does it seem like kind of throwing the ball up and hoping that it gets in the glove, or it just seems a little odd to me?
People are going to do what people are going to do. Some people, if you make a mandate, will follow it even though they don't want to, because it's out of respect for authority and your position and what the county's asking them to do. They'll say, damn, I don't want to wear that mask if I'm going, but I'm, I'm, I'm not one to, you know, flout it, so I'm going to go. Then there's the other person that's going to say, screw them, no matter what. I'm doing what I want to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
And we've seen that since the start of COVID here anyway, too, you know, in this facility. Mr. Commissioner Pop?
I, I really liked his statement about support the concept, but not the mandate. I don't think supporting a mandate is really going to change much. The public is educated. We've been educated for two years, and I think they're going to do what they want to do. And I don't think it's really the role of the county to have any kind of a mandate at this point in time. I think it's, you know, we know where we're going, we know what's going to happen, we know where we've been. And I, I just don't think that any kind of a mandate is going to make that much of a difference in what happens.
I know where you're coming from with that, that statement.
I think the concept's great, and I think, you know, we've got to credit Central Care for getting out there and trying to do it. Our county to the south did not support it. They're support the concept, but not the mandates.
I don't trust.
Which county? Just hang on a minute with that one. Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead.
To be educated. Because who really takes the time? They'll read one article
Yeah.
from the side they want to read. That's truth.
Yeah.
You know?
You got to have an open mind.
Right.
You know, when you're looking at this.
But you've heard my opinion, and opinions are very, everybody's got them.
Everyone's got them. That's correct. Yep, thank you. Monty, you want to give some information about other counties and everything, too, that you received, that you shared with me?
Yeah, let's see.
I believe there's seven counties already that.
So, you know, I was on a micro call Friday, and I asked a question, and I know Dakota said yes, we require them of the public and employees. St. Louis said yes. Rice County said yes. Those are ones I recall. And I, let's see what Michelle has here in her memo.
Did he say Dakota?
Let's see here.
Yeah, I believe there were seven counties already.
Right.
Just Micah counties?
Yeah. This is actually, the particular one doesn't have the listing of the counties. I think you asked me to check with Stearns and Sherburne.
Correct.
So Stearns is requiring, as of Monday, they're requiring employees to wear masks. They're encouraging the public. Sherburne, at this point, really isn't doing either. They adopted a policy, as we talked earlier about the OSHA ETS, so unvaxxed employees who must test have to wear a mask. So they adopted that part, but they don't currently have a policy that requires all employees, or certainly the public, to wear masks in their facilities. So that's the two counties I did hear from yesterday. So. I guess something else I want to share with you is, we do have a standing request from the city of St. Cloud to be a signatory to a letter. The letter encourages mask-wearing, doesn't mandate it. We got this request Friday or Monday from the city of St. Cloud, asking our candidate to sign this letter. I let the folks at the city of St. Cloud know we were mean this morning, and I would let them know afterwards. I actually, I'm going to put this letter up on the screen, and I'm sorry for people at home, I can't share it. So let me just switch here. Working through the technology.
As you get through technology, I will share some of my experiences. In my inner circle, I have people that do work at the hospital. I hear all this information every day of what's going on, of how they're mandated, and the amount of hours that they have to work. And it's very tiresome. I can tell you, also, in my previous experience before my shoulder surgery, I had to get tested for five weeks in a row before I could have my surgery. I had to get tested, and I had to prove, I had to have negative tests five weeks in a row before I could have this surgery done.
So this letter was drafted by the city of St. Cloud, and it just recites some statistics about the positivity rate, hospital capacity at St. Cloud Hospital, and so on. And then, I suppose this is probably the more important part. It says, we are recommending wear masks indoors when you're around others, limit interaction with others outside your work group or family, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, get vaccines. The last paragraph talks about the surge is putting pressure on local healthcare systems, concerned about continuity of operations of our schools, government services, businesses, and restaurants. We need to take additional precautions to keep our local economy going. Please join us in protecting our communities, our friends, our neighbors, our loved ones, and each other. And so this letter was signed by the mayors of St. Cloud, Sartell, Stock Rapids, and Wake Park. And they asked for signatures.
And then they spelt my name. Oh, no, they got my name.
They've asked for signatures from the three area counties. So I am just the messenger conveying to you this request.
We have a lot of messengers.
So, and I'm sure you saw the headline in response to this. I believe this letter was released to the public last night at a council meeting, so it was reported on the day St. Cloud Times. Mrs. Chair, that's all I have. I'm certainly happy to answer any more questions about the policy.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schlangen?
I, I would have liked to have seen if there was still a representative from Central Care there. I saw.
Well, let's, let's check in, let's check in on GoTo and see if there are any.
There's one from Central Care on there, if I could ask him questions, if possible.
So if there's anyone on GoTo from Central Care, and they're able to answer questions, could you unmute your microphone for us, please? I see a Jody. But again, only if you're comfortable answering questions. We don't appear to be getting any takers.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kapinski?
I just wanted to go back to Commissioner Johnson's question on how many were leaving because of vaccine mandates. I think we all know, we can't quantify that, but I think that was a vast majority of them. There is a lot of tired individuals out there. I talked to, as, as most people have been on the phone the last few days quite a bit, but I actually reached out to my medical people. Actually, one was at my kid's basketball game last night, or practice, and she made a note to me and said, you know, or she, she said, I know you guys are talking about this. She goes, I just took a, a promotion in Central Care to be a supervisor. I go, oh, yeah, how's that going? And she goes, I don't consider it a promotion, if that tells you anything. She goes, it's, it's horrible around there right now. And she's actually thinking of leaving. And so, and she's, she's vaccinated, so I wanted just a comment on that. I'm really tore on this whole deal. I think, I think the rights, the lefts, every, from the start of this, has been mishandled completely. And I think now, when we're in a complete need, the whole mandate from above us gets pushed down to local government, and we're once again put in the, in the firing line to say, is it our job to do this? Then we also have to do a compassionate thing on the other side, going, we're danged if we do, and we're danged if we don't. If we, if we do it, we upset some people, but we'll probably never ever quantify that it actually helped. But if we don't do it, we're going to second-guess ourselves, going, God, look at the numbers they, they've been saying. They're actually higher than what they projected, and we did nothing. So I'll be honest with you. I sit here right now, tore on it, and I, I'm fully vaccinated, I'll be honest with you. It, it, I don't like mandates one bit. I think our whole board made that very clear the other day. And I sit here doing this, going, if I did support something like this, I would want a timeframe on it. I wouldn't want it open-ended. I would, if, if they're saying a four-week surge or peak, I would say that's it. The other thing that's a little bit alarming to me is that we wouldn't police it. To me, that's, as you said, throwing a ball up and hoping it hits the glove. That doesn't make a lot of sense either. If we're really doing it, we should be policing it. So I mean, that's just my two cents.
Thank you for that. I do share the same opinion, you know. Regardless of what we do here this morning, we're not going to do the right thing. It ain't going to matter. We're not going to be able to do the right thing because we're always going to get told about it. I guess I look at, we've got 280 employees, about 30 of them, I believe, from the court facility that have been mandated since day one, do have nothing but masks.
They've been under a mask mandate for a while, and I know throughout the entire, it used to be just in courtrooms, but now I believe it's the entire court facility is under a mask mandate. They've been under a mask mandate for a while, and I know throughout the entire, it used to be just in courtrooms, but now I believe it's the entire court facility is under a mask mandate by the Supreme Court Justice.
Correct, and that ain't gonna go away for quite some time talking to them, you know? And I sit on a couple of those committees too, you know? So we have to ask ourselves, is this the right thing for us to do for our employees, for the safety of our employees?
Mr. Chair, can I?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Can I, a question about the ones in the court facility? Have any of those, um, been testing positive for COVID?
I don't know, and I would be reluctant to answer that because that would tend to sort of disclose identities and so on.
Correct, yeah.
I would just want to know if they're, they have numbers.
That is probably information we can never get because of the.
I would not wanna get too specific about anything that's related to a medical diagnosis. We wouldn't have access to the information regardless, so.
Right. Anything else? Questions, concerns?
Well, this is.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Okay. The.
Questions we can answer.
Okay, the only facts that I got out of all the questions I answered, got asked, were how many deaths there were in, in the past three years from Benton County. In 2019, there was 390. In 2020, there was 484, so it was up about 24%. And then in '21, it was back down to 404, so it was only about a 3.5% increase. So. Of course, we don't, and they can't specify which deaths were of what, so.
Yeah.
But you can try to think that probably because of COVID, there was an increase in 2020. And they were trying to figure out how to treat things, and I, as far as I know, Center Care has not changed much of their treatments since we've started. And I don't know what antivirals they're looking at that are in short supply.
They did, if you went on your, on that GoTo meeting, they did list the two of them that they've been using that are in short supply. Uh, right off the top of my head, no. Because I'm not in a medical profession.
I know the, uh, the mononuclear, um, antibodies were short, and I didn't know what, I didn't get the names of the things that they were talking about.
Right.
But I, I know that, um, there isn't just shortage of ivermectin, and that's been shown to be help for, for people.
I think that would be your opinion, wouldn't it, though?
Right, that's, ivermectin wasn't recommended treatment.
That is correct.
Number two remedy.
That is correct. So whatever the medical profession at, at Center Care is gonna use is totally up to them.
Yeah, the city has it as number two, and I don't think they're using it.
Well, that's fine, but that is their medical decision to use whatever they have appropriate for them to use.
I know they have been using remdesivir. I don't know if they backed off on any of that or not, but that's been known to cause problems.
Those are questions that we cannot answer. Center Care is the ones that can answer that if they want to answer those questions.
And they haven't answered my questions I asked.
Any, anything else?
Okay. So my. And I had heard that the testing sensitivities went from the twenties up to the forties, so that's gonna, a lot of people are acquiring the stuff, so it's building up in their body, so it's gonna be showing up when they get tested. So maybe that's why there's such a higher amount being tested positive now. I can't tell you, but, um. My suggestion would be if we wanted to be concerned, we could do, make, ask people that have symptoms not to come to the county or be working. If they were coming in, instead of doing the masking, we could test a temperature, if there's a productive cough, and say, "No, you're not coming in."
I, I think with that question, it's really up to the individual knowing that when they are sick, they're not supposed to be coming in anyway. Irregardless, they're not supposed to.
And as far as the, keep giving the vaccines, every time we give another vaccine, we've got another surge. I don't think we're solving the problem getting vaccines.
Okay, thank you for your opinion on that. Do you got anything else?
That would be my suggestions.
Great, thank you. Uh, in those suggestions, you know, HR is telling everybody, of course, to, you know, about policing themselves, about not coming in, being sick, and everything else too.
Yes, if you're looking for an answer.
You know, the, the only struggle with this variance is that nobody here knows if they have it right now. Everybody in this room could have it and could be passionate along to all of us at, right now, you know? And then it's gonna affect everybody else, so multiplies that quick.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gepinski.
There was a, on a couple of the conversations I had yesterday with, uh, employees, uh, one had stated that they had just gotten out of the hospital, or recently with COVID, and, and basically said that the mask would actually hinder them because of their lung capacity and stuff like that. So I wanted to make that aware to Johanna and just, and, and make sure that, I, I never thought of that. It's like, 'cause I made the statement, you know, there's, there's a lot of, uh, um, questions about if these masks even work. And, but I, I also haven't heard of too many saying that, that they absolutely are worthless either. And that's, and, and the individual had stated, he goes, "Well, on my side, it, it is a hindrance on me because my lungs are not back to capacity." So I wanted to bring that up. Then, then, then one other thing before you jump in, Monte. And I should have known this, but, uh, um, there was an area of concern under dispatch. And, you know, when they're trying to talk through the radio and, and officers are trying to talk through the radio on just the muffled, I mean, they're muffled a lot of times when they're talking fast as, as it is. So that is a concern on the emergency management side of things going, you know, if you can't hear the direction or, or what is supposed to be happening, um, that, that's, uh, that's a tough scenario. So, we, once again, we sit up here going, "God, do we, do we, do we make, uh, exceptions here, and do we make exceptions there? And how do we keep everybody safe? We lose anybody in dispatch because they're not wearing masks."
Yeah.
We take a lot of our emergency management down, down the tubes, so.
So if I may respond, uh, the policy allows, just like it did months ago, if someone has a medical condition, mental health condition or disability that makes it unreasonable for them to wear a mask, then we would look at some other form of reasonable accommodation, like a face shield, something of that nature, or working remotely. So the same accommodations we talked about months ago would still be applicable here. So if, again, for various health reasons you couldn't, shouldn't, then we would find some accommodation for you. And, and also too, there's, there's an exception for, it talks about here on page two and number three. It says, you know, "If the use of face coverings is infeasible or creates a greater hazard, et cetera, et cetera, uh, then employee could, uh, be allowed to not, not wear a mask." And that addresses the public safety issue that you just raised. So a deputy or what have you, that just, it doesn't, it creates actually more harm or more hazard, then, then of course, then they shouldn't wear a mask. So it's the same set of conditions we operated on for months and months under the governor's.
Yeah.
Mask mandate and allowing those exceptions.
Commissioner Pop?
I guess that was the, the only exception I have to that, that everybody was mandated. It wasn't just this county and that county and, and each county doing their own thing. Um, that's where I have a problem. Before it was, we didn't have any choices. It was, it was all, right here we have choices of each one. There's, there's things in the resolution that I would, would question that we'd have to look at before I would be willing to support it. I don't know. It's a, it's a tough call.
We, Commissioner Pop, we've had this tough decision since the beginning of COVID year.
No, it was ea, it was easier last time, definitely.
At first, yep.
It was definitely a lot easier because.
You were mandated.
We were mandated.
By the government, yep. Yep, by the state.
It was, it was a lot. And truthfully, constituents, people, public, um, there's a large percentage are tired of it.
Oh, no doubt.
Oh, absolutely.
They don't, they don't care anymore whether they come. So I don't know. I do like the St., or the city of St. Cloud, I do like that, that came forward. I could totally support that, this, you know, for the county to sign on to that.
Commissioner Schlangen? You got a question?
With, uh, masking too, I've had one of those, I've had on the N95 masks, and it's. With a long period, it, it's hard to breathe, and I can't handle it real well, but.
Commissioner Gepinski?
You know, I, I keep struggling up here because I, I, I agree with everybody's just, you know, different points. You know, it, it comes down to, it, one of the, one of the constituents I talked to yesterday made a, made a, made a comment to me, "Don't be a follower, be a leader." You know, I thought Sherburne actually, actually did this already, you know? So now I'm sitting here going, "Am I a leader or a follower?" Because Stearns did portion, a portion of it. I also look at it and go, i- if this, come back to Commissioner Heinon, if he, i- if this protects our people inside the workplace from transmitting it to themselves or to others within here, that could be a good thing. And then I could, I, I, I look at, I could be one of the most unpopular ones in the county right now going, "I support it i- if, if it saves four lives," you know, over the course of, of this. And we look back and go, "We were a part of doing this, even though it was the most unpopular thing, but I wouldn't support it for more than a six-week period." You know, if they're saying two to six weeks, I would be more inclined to roll the dice if there was a date on it, that was a, that was a solid end date on it. But I would like to see us police it a little bit more because I don't wanna put something in and go, you know, "Oh, hum," either, so.
I imagine we could make a call to the, the security company and, and have a person stationed at a desk, um, just like we did for several months, uh, in probably fairly short order. We could do that, you know?
Could I add a comment?
Uh, go ahead, Michelle.
I have, um, we did, I did mention several of the counties that do have it. It wasn't comprehensive by any means. That was on the second page of the memo. So if you wanna reference that, you sort of look in, um, it was the second paragraph on that second page. And then, um, I did have some references for the resolutions, and one of the counties, two of the counties, actually put in an end to their local emergencies, which with the county manager, which in our case would be the county administrator, in consultation with the Director of Public Health, to rescind the face covering policy upon determination that the county is categorized by the CDC as community with moderate COVID-19 transmission. So instead of putting an end date, they, uh, ended it based on classification. So that's something else to consider if you want.
To, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
To quantify what I was saying about an end date, I talked to eight people personally on the phone, county employees yesterday. Seven of the eight were actually a lot better with it if there was a hard end date. They said they could live with that. So that's just information on that side of things. Once again, it, probably the most unpopular thing in the county to mandate something, and, but that's why we put our names on the ballots, is to, to make these decisions. And once again, I, I don't hold it against any commissioner for having their own view on, on this. As you can see, I'm about 50/50. Probably still haven't made up my mind.
Well, what would the commissioners like to do? Commissioner Pop, you said you had some reservations on the resolution on some of this stuff?
Yeah, um, I think if we looked at the res.
If we get to this point anyway.
But we could, you want, maybe.
Go ahead, sir.
Maybe we need a motion to.
No, just go ahead and express your opinion.
So on number five, I, I think that we should change the wording of ages too must wear to, um, something like must wear face covering to, it is suggested to wear face covering? Or I don't think the word must should be in there. I still think you gotta leave it up to the people that are out there. I, I just, you know, I mean, if you're fully vaccinated, you wanna come to the county, and you don't wanna wear a mask, I think that's your priority. We can't ask them if they're fully vaccinated, but we have to assume that that's why they don't wanna wear a mask. And to tell you the truth, the ones that are fully vaccinated are probably gonna wear the mask. You know? I mean, that's just the way it works.
Right.
We know, we know what's here, and we know what's here.
Mr. Chair, i- if I could, I guess in my opinion, without going down a deep bunny trail, if this is something the board's gonna, if there's someone interested in moving on this, get him, let's get a motion, get a second, have some discussion, and go from there. If we're not even gonna get a motion, we're kinda talking.
Correct.
For a long time about nothing.
Okay.
As far as a decision.
Is anyone ready, ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I like where Commissioner Pop was going. I would make a motion, uh, with making some changes, including, uh, suggesting incoming patrons wear it. That would take, uh, an issue away, and then also we, I, I won't support it unless there's an end date. So I'll make a motion, but we need to work through these, uh, these, uh, one through 10 notes.
So maybe, and maybe for simplicity's sake, we could take one step at a time.
Right.
So you've got the employee mask policy, and then you've got the public mask resolution. Which one do you wanna take first?
We should probably take the employee first because then the, uh, visitor would be second.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'll take the employee first. I would make a motion to do this with a. The max of a six-week.
So that would take us through February 22nd.
Yeah.
Which of the two policies, number one or number two?
Number two.
Number two.
Number two. We gotta use common sense.
Okay, through February 22nd.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Okay, now let's go into a discussion about this one.
Do you wanna clarify your number five?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify number five.
Uh, that would be on letting, uh, the public in. We'll be taking that one second.
Or doing the.
Yeah, we're, we're just doing the employee one first.
Policy number two.
Yep.
Through February 22nd.
Any discussion?
I.
Commissioner Schlangen?
I guess I would like to see it recommended instead of mandated.
Oh, for employees?
Yeah, also. And if, my suggestion would be to do that, if you wanted to, you could do the testing of the temperature, or if there's symptoms that are evident. Or, yeah, just, or at least ask the questions if you want to, but I wouldn't.
I think that goes into private data practice through HR. That would be a problem with HR.
It would be a struggle. It wouldn't be able to be implemented by Monday.
Correct, yep, no, that is true.
Mr. Chair.
Any, Commissioner Gepinski?
The reason I motioned for this, and I just wanna be very clear, I, I hate mandates. But if this helps over a short six-week period from the people in the healthcare facilities and our own public, uh, there are employees here, I'm willing to roll the dice, even if it's unpopular in the county. I'll, I'll live by it. I'll, I'll wear my mask everywhere. Um, I don't like to wear masks, but I just wanted to clarify that. But there's gotta be an end date, as, as we noted.
Thank you, Commissioner Gepinski, and I agree with you too. The only way I would approve of this would be an end date. Any further discussion on this?
I would also add that.
Commissioner Schlangen?
I would suggest stop giving the vaccines.
Mr. Chair, if, if I could.
Commissioner Johnson.
If I could, just to clarify, Commissioner Schlangen, I believe the motion's very clear on the floor about.
It is.
What they wanna do with employees' own. what they want to do with employees only, is as what's presented, and the only thing that I understood that they changed were to add an end date. I, I don't, I'm not hearing them changing anything else in regards to their motion. So I think, in rules, orders, we need to act on this first. If you have something else you'd like to change, and I think we get a motion on that and move forward.
That is correct, Mr. Johnson. Once there's a motion made, and, and second, and you cannot change the motion until it's acted on.
Or unless the person would like to change their motion.
Correct. You have a question?
What's that?
I just seen HR run to Monte quickly, so I figured there was a question.
I think Johanna was asking about enforcement, and, you know, I, I think it's a little different with the public versus employees. Obviously, you know, if, if the board adopts a policy, employees are obliged to follow it, and there are consequences for not. That's, that's true of any policy the board adopts, personal policy and otherwise. So I, I think, again, there would be the requirement that employees would follow the policy. It, it would, it would, again, I, I think the, the way you handle this is very different than you would with the public. If we move on to the public discussion, the board actually wants more aggressive enforcement, absolutely, we'll do it. We'll put the arrangements in place, and have security here, and, and actively enforce it, if that's your decision.
That really will be a discussion if this passes or fails, because if this fails at that point in time, there will be no discussion, or have to be any discussion on the public coming in.
Okay. Mr. Chair, one more note, we've been talking about numbers all day, and I'm a numbers guy. I had a total of 18 people reach out to me. That leaves a significant amount of people that have not within the county. So that, that's a, that's a huge number that we haven't heard from. I just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd ask you to call a question.
Okay, at this point in time, we've got a motion and a second. I'm going to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a roll call, Monte?
Yes, we need a roll call.
Beth, can you do a roll call for us? Could Beth do a roll call, please? I can do that.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Oh, I got it. I'm so sorry. Commissioner Schlangen?
I would be, nay.
Nay, you're correct.
Nay. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Heinon?
Yes.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pop?
Yes.
Three, two, the motion carries. Now, let's go into our second discussion. Now, Monte, you had some questions about this one, before I cut you off? About enforcement and everything?
Excuse me?
About the enforcement and all that, about the general public?
Well, I think that's where we need to, that's where we need some discussion. I, I think, I think you first should address, are you actually inclined to approve it, and if so, in what form? Voluntary, mandatory? If it's going to be voluntary, of course, then we don't need a security guard sitting there. If it's going to be mandatory, then perhaps we do. So I would, I would try and address it in that order. How do you want, what do you want this to look like? Mandatory or just encouraged?
Commissioner Johnson, how would you like us to approach on this one? Would you like us to do a motion and a second, then discuss, or should we just discuss first?
That's up to you, Mr. Chair. If it was me, I would ask for the motion and the second, and have the discussion, but that's your choice.
I understand. I just had to ask that.
Yep, I'll make the motion, so we can have further discussion on the Benton County public mandates.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Pop, you're talking about the public coming to the facilities, not the public.
Yep, the public coming to the facilities.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, and
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you please restate the motion for, I mean?
Commissioner Pop, please.
So we're, I, I move that we, how should I say that? I move for the support of Benton County's public coming to our facilities.
Is that another way of saying you would encourage mask-wearing in our facilities?
I think we're going to get to that.
We're going to get to that. I'm just supporting what is presented before us right now. In order to have further
We can have discussion.
You talking about the city of St. Cloud letter?
No, that's, we'll do that later, I would think, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yes, we will. So we just need clarification of your motion. This is what, that's what we need, Commissioner Pop.
I don't know how you really want to state it.
Uh, well.
Suggested or recommended?
Take your time.
I'll move that we suggest Benton County declares an emergency, emergency declaration for the public coming to our facilities.
To wear face masks.
To wear, well, there was a whole bunch of
Well, no, so we'd have to probably put that in our motion, so we know what the motion would be of. Commissioner Johnson, would that be correct?
You could say
As vice chair?
Well, yeah, up to him to clarify what he means by his motion, I guess. I, I understand a Commissioner Pop to say that you want to have discussion regards to the public
Yes, right, yes.
facilities.
Right.
And in regards to a mask mandate.
Yes.
I'm assuming that was the motion that you would like to have, Mr. Pop?
Without getting too into the weeds.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we're, we're essentially declaring that, that a public health emergency does exist. That's what, did I hear that correctly?
Motion maker?
I heard those words in the motion.
That a public health emergency does exist, and Benton County should consider adopting the emergency status. Does that get it?
I'll second that, and then we can discuss.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go into the discussion, please.
Now you can clarify.
Yeah.
Now you can have some clarification.
There's some things in, in one through 10 that I don't think should be in there if we are going to pass this. And number five would be my first one, that we, we take out the word must wear a mask to suggest it to wear a mask.
Would you accept recommend?
Or recommend they wear a mask, yep.
Keep going, Commissioner Pop.
That was my main one. And do you want to, do we want to put the same end date on that as, as the February 22nd?
Yes.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So then number 10 would be changed to?
February 22nd.
February 22nd.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, Monte, we would be putting notices on all the doors like we have in the past?
Absolutely. Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Question, nothing to add? Any other commissioners have anything to add about this discussion? With that, I've got a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion fails, three to two.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, if, if I could ask Beth or Monte to do a roll call, just so we're
Go ahead, Beth, please.
Commissioner Schlangen?
So what?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. You voted against it.
Are, are recommended? I'll see.
Sorry, Commissioner Schlangen, I believe that the vote was essentially on a modified resolution, and as Commissioner Pop shared with us, I have number five, you would change from must to recommended. I have number 10, you would put in the end date of February 22nd. So effectively, that's what you were voting on in this instance. So it was recommending that the public wear a mask through February 22nd, when they come into our facilities.
And when I called the question, it was three to two, not in favor, and motion failed. So Beth is doing the roll call right now. So she's asking what you voted.
So this would mean there would be no masks if we voted
Commissioner Schlangen?
Against it?
So we would just, we would simply put out notice to the world that we recommend the public wear a mask when they come into our facilities. It would not be required, just recommended, requested. That's another way of putting it.
We, we do have it on the record that we had three no votes and two yes votes.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, and I'm just asking for clarification and a roll call. So on the, on the initial vote, I believe your vote was no.
On the record, if we go back, it, it was no for Commissioner Schlangen, Johnson, and Pop. Beth is just doing roll call.
I will say yes.
At that point in time, you've already switched your vote. So that doesn't work.
Commissioner Schlangen, I, I, at that point, your vote was no, along with two others of us, and I'm just asking for clarification via a roll call for the record. I, I don't believe it's an issue of changing a vote at this point.
Okay. You know, I suppose if we want to do this all neat and tidy with Robert's rules, it was a three to, it failed. If you want to, if you want to reconsider, the prevailing side should make a motion to reconsider. So for example, if Commissioner Schlangen is saying, hey, you know, I'm having second thoughts, then perhaps she would say, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to reconsider the previous action. If there's a second, you could vote again. That's probably how I would do it, to keep it clean.
Thank you for that clarification, Monte.
But again, the, the side that prevailed needs to make the motion.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes. So I, any of those three folks want to make a motion to reconsider, they could.
Correct.
Right.
And the second.
And you need a second.
That is correct, from those three.
Yes.
Of course.
Okay, so, no.
No. I'm sorry, Beth, I didn't wait for you. I'm sorry. Go ahead and start over, please, with Commissioner Schlangen.
So Commissioner Johnson, no.
No.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Heinon?
Yes.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pop?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So with that, Monte, you're looking puzzled and confused.
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to look puzzled.
Okay, so that motion fails. Commissioner Johnson?
Motion adjourned?
No, we'll hold it.
We got the
Letter.
Got the letter from
The letter from St. Cloud.
Thank you for bringing it up. So I, again, I should just ask, are, are you inclined to be a signatory to the city of St. Cloud authored letter?
Mr. Chair, if I could, Monte, could you please put that back up?
You betcha.
Thank you.
That is just a recommendation of what's all the city St. Cloud mayors are, are signing, just a le- letter of recommendation.
I'm sorry, the copier was tied up when I for a very legitimate reason, I should say. Okay. So, again, just reading, I can certainly read out loud, says, we need your help with the current surge of COVID-19. Your actions have an impact. The variant is highly contagious. Number of people getting sick is increasing. And then they cite some statistics, positivity rate, 49.7, growth of COVID community, 250%, 7% of ICU beds filled, on down the line, if, oh, the variant is affecting kids more frequently and more severely. And then again, they recommend, it's recommend, uh, wearing masks indoors when you're around others, limit air action with others outside your work group or family, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, and get your vaccine.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve recommendation to follow the city mayors that have signed off city of St. Cloud, Sartell, Sauk Rapids, and Wake Park. To me, this is a lot of personal responsibility and common sense, so I'm for it.
And I'll second that.
Great, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? I am more than happy to sign on this one, too. Any more discussion? Going to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call. Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinon?
Yes.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn?